Good evening, everybody. It's 7:00 on Monday, June 21st, and we will call the Sioux State Marie City Commission Meeting to Order. We could have a roll call.
Mayor Gary.
I'm here.
Commissioner Bauer.
Here.
Commissioner Bosvis Wrath, was that you?
Yeah, that was me.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Talentino.
Here.
Commissioner Twardy.
Here.
All are present and accounted for. Thank you very much. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and mute your microphones, Commissioner Miller will lead us.
Thank you, Your Honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Miller. Moving on into mayor comments and general announcements. Just a reminder that this is our last city of Sioux State Marie Zoom meeting that we know of. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, July 6th because of the Fourth of July holiday. We will be having our meeting on Tuesday. It will be in person in our city commission chambers and will be broadcast on Charter Channel 180. Is it six, Brian?
Yes.
So, thank you very much. One thing I forgot to mention at the last meeting was for nearly three decades, Sanderson Field, City of Sioux State Marie Airport, and Sioux Pilots Association have hosted the Young Eagles Day. Six pilots volunteered their time to fly on Saturday, June 5th, and had 79 young eagles attend, and they get to go for a ride all free of charge. So, thank you very much to the Sioux Pilots Association. Tonight, I'd like to extend my sincerest thoughts and prayers to the Robinson family in the Sioux who lost their daughter last week in a tragic and senseless automobile incident. We all know that actions have consequences, and this unfortunate circumstance, the third party's criminal action and negligence resulted in the senseless loss of a totally innocent life. Katie was a talented and young and kind young girl, and she was actually coming home from work at Sioux Animal Hospital, and she was enrolled to attend LSSU and play women's hockey in the fall. Katie and her family are good friends of ours, and we will miss her greatly. So, if we could have just a moment of silence in honor of Katie. Thank you very much, everybody. Moving on to Declaration of Locations. So, if we could go down the roll call. Commissioner Bauer.
Chippewa County, Michigan.
Commissioner Bosvis Wrath.
Chippewa County, Michigan.
Commissioner Collins.
Chippewa County, Michigan.
Commissioner Miller.
I'm in Sioux State Marie, Chippewa County, Michigan.
Commissioner Talentino.
Chippewa County, Michigan.
Commissioner Twardy.
Chippewa County, Michigan.
And I am attending from Ottawa County, Michigan this evening. Moving on into Item B, Proclamations and Recognitions. City Manager, you want me to just go ahead?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So, as most of you know, we will have a special guest at our Fourth of July Parade, the first time we've ever had a grand marshal, and it is head coach of the Detroit Red Wings, Jeff Lashell, who was raised in Sioux State Marie, Michigan, and his family and siblings were raised here as well. We will have a recognition event on Saturday, July 3rd, at the Polar from 10:00 until noon, where people can come and meet Jeff and get autographs. We have a bunch of photographs that he can sign and give to kids and adults alike. We also have two Red Wings jerseys, five Red Wings t-shirts, and five hats that we will be raffling off that Jeff will hand sign and give away. So, we expect a lot of people there, and we expect to have a lot of fun. Jeff is a good personality. At noon, if we so choose to accept this proclamation, we will present to him a proclamation and a key to the city on a stage, and then Jeff will give some comments himself. And then on Sunday, the Fourth of July, at 7:00, Jeff will be our guest, and he will be the grand marshal of the parade, so he will ride on the city's float. And so, everybody will see him there. Many thanks to the CBB and the Chamber of Commerce for helping to coordinate this event. John Serok from Cloverland Electric for initiating the event, and certainly Linda Holt has helped to pay and coordinate all of this. No great event is free, and she's been very willing to help us out moving forward with this. So, thank you to CBBs, thanks to Chamber Commerce, John Serok, and all that are involved, and certainly the city of Sioux State Marie for the coordination, and Ryan Chapman, Dan Long, buddy for getting the, I know we'll have the polar setup. I'm ready to go, so. So, really need official approval, but I think it would be nice to have in the permanent record, the motion and support and voice vote to approve the proclamation this evening. So, could we get a, can you hear me? My internet's a little unstable.
Real quick to approve the proclamation.
City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, just really quick, if you want to turn off your camera, I don't think you have that best of internet connection, so you're kind of an over kind of.
Okay.
Potty and choppy. Sorry about that.
No, I'm sorry. So, it has been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Hope everybody can attend on Saturday morning from 10 till noon, and also attend the parade with the head coach of the Detroit Red Wings, Jeff Lashell. So, Commissioner Miller.
I'm sorry, Your Honor, to interrupt. I just had a quick question for you. In the last week or 10 days, I've been down to the Polar a couple of times. Things seem to me to be a little dirty and disheveled down there. Is it going to be, you think we can fix it up a little bit before we have the event, so we can put on a good face?
Yes, sir. Yes, we'll have it cleaned up and ready to go for the event.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
Thanks for that, Commissioner.
So, I have a question.
Sure.
Where's the event going to be held at?
Polar Stadium.
Is it going to be in the stadium or like behind the stadium? We're both.
We're going to have it right down on the, what would be the ice surface on the concrete pad. We thought it would be appropriate. Jeff played there. Of course, the Red Wings used to hold their practice camps there, so we thought it would be appropriate, just to have him write it down there.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Any other questions, comments? All right. So, moving on into C, which is public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make any comments on any of our scheduled agenda items? If you could give us your name and your location, we would be glad to reserve time for you to speak on any agenda item.
Hey, Don, this is Jeff Basista.
Yes, sir.
I'm here in Sioux State Marie, and I would like to speak about the splash pad.
Sure thing, Jeff. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Anybody else?
Hey, Don.
Yes.
This is Amanda Tonight from the Sioux Splash Pad Committee. I would also like to speak on the Splash Pad section.
All right. Sure thing. Thanks for coming tonight. Anybody else?
Yeah, Brian, this is Michelle from the Sioux Splash Pad Committee. I'd like to speak in public comment as well for Sioux Splash Pad.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Jocelyn Burke as well.
This is Abby Bell from the Sioux.
Okay, I got Abby. The first one was Jocelyn. Yes.
Burke.
Burke, okay, thanks. Jocelyn and Abby Bell. Any other attendees that would like to speak?
Did you get Abby, Mr. Mayor?
I think so. I got Jeff Basista, Amanda Tonight, Michelle. I did, sorry, I didn't get your last name.
Callahan.
Callahan. I got Jocelyn Burke and Abby Bell. Is that correct? Lisa Young.
This is Sabrina Neview, and I would also comment. The other ladies, people might have it covered, but just in case from, no. On behalf of Splash Pad.
Okay, anybody else?
There was a Rick.
Did you hear me? Lisa Young.
Lisa Young.
I got Lisa Young, yep. Lisa Young and Sabrina Neview are number six and number seven. Mr. Miller has his hand up. You want to speak on it, too?
I had a question for you, Your Honor.
Sure.
Of the folks that you're going to have speak on this, how many people are on the Splash Pad Committee? Because maybe just one person from the committee could probably be a little more succinct than.
I don't, I'm not sure, but certainly they all have an opportunity, and we'll see how it goes, so. I know Justin will do a good job of explaining everything for us. Anybody else that would like to speak on any of the agenda items tonight? All right. So, we'll move on to Item D, which is the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Under the Consent Agenda, approval of the City Commission Meeting Minutes at June 7th, 2021. Acceptance of the Airport Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of May 13th, 2021. Acceptance of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Meeting Minutes of May 11th, 2021. Acceptance of the Economic Development Corporation Meeting Minutes of May 11th, 2021. Acceptance of the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of May 27th, 2021. Item 6, Consideration of Updated Family Medical Leave Act FM LA Policy. Item 7, Approval of Wage Adjustments for Non-Union Employees. Item 8, Consideration of a Budget Amendment for the EDC Operations Budget for Gatekeeper Grant. Item 9, Scheduling of a Public Hearing on Clean Water State Revolving Fund, SRF Project Plan for the Water Street CSO Project for the Regular City Commission Meeting on July 19th, 2021. Item 10, Consideration of a Private Use Agreement for Purpose of Constructing a Private Storm Sewer and Sheridan Drive Right-Away. Item 11 is to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign Court Street Relocation Easement for Cloverland Electric. Item 12 is from the Chippewa County Community Foundation, Authorization to Sell Liquor on City-Owned Property for the Sioux Ultimate Paddle Day on August 21st, 2021, subject to the rules of the Michigan Liquor Control Commission and any rules established by the city manager. And Item 13 is Approval of the Consent Agenda Items as Presented.
Thank you very much. Is there any item, or is there any commissioner that would like any item further explained or removed from the consent agenda for individual consideration? Seeing none, Commissioner Twardy.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
Commissioner Bosvis Wrath.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to E, Special Orders of Business. City Manager Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up first tonight is a public hearing on a resolution to vacate the full width of David Street, as well as final commission consideration for the item. If you want to open up the public hearing, see if there's any comments on this particular item. We'll get into more of the analysis afterwards.
Sorry for the delay. Okay, so at this time, we will open a public hearing on a resolution to vacate the full width of David Street between 20th Avenue and 21st Avenue, together with the full width of the alley lying east of the I-75 Business Center right-of-way within Block 2 Marshall's Edition with the retention of reutility easements. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions or comments on this item? So, again, this is a public hearing on a resolution to vacate full width of David Street on the aforementioned sections. Are there any questions or comments from the general public? We will now close the public hearing and move to the city commission. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Seeing none, Commissioner Bauer, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I would. I move to approve the included resolution to vacate the full width of David Street between 20th Avenue and 21st Avenue, together with the full width of the alley lying east of the I-75 Business Center right-of-way within Block 2 Marshall's Edition with retention of utility easements.
Support.
Thank you. It has been moved and supported. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
Commissioner Bosvis Wrath.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Gary.
Yes. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to Item E, Special Orders of Business. Item 2, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next for commission consideration and action is a request for second reading and final consideration on an ordinance to amend the zoning code in Create Section 10-1.15B and amending Section 10-1.1600 to create an airport zoning district. So, again, this item isn't particularly rezoning any piece of property. It is just creating the text language within the zoning ordinance. So, we request a second reading. Kelly, remind me, do we have to have a public hearing on this? We do, right?
No, sir. The public hearing is held at the planning commission level.
Got it. Thank you very much. So, we would just look for a second reading, which I fact of having it on the agenda, we have done, and a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
Thank you, City Manager. Any questions or comments on this item for City Manager or Planning Director Freeman? Commissioner Bosvis Wrath, would you like to make the motion?
Absolutely.
Short one this time.
You gave me a short one. I thought you were going to give me the last one. I was all ready. All right. Motion to approve the included ordinance creating Section 10-1.15B and amending Section 10-1.1600 to create the AP Airport Zoning District.
Support.
Has been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bosvis Wrath.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to Item F, which is Communications, Number 1. City Manager Chapman, if you want to introduce it or hand it off to Commissioner Miller.
Name is Mayor. We had a request from Commissioner Miller to discuss parking on the grass at Rotary Park, so I'll hand it over to Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. It was brought to my attention in early spring by some local folks that when they're down at Rotary Park, there was a lot of people parking on the grass, even when there was empty, even when there was empty spots available. I go down there and fish sometimes. I went down three or four different times and fished, and I watched. One day when I was there, there was like 11 or 12 cars parked on the grass, which by this time was dry and dead. They were kind of tearing it up, and there was a lot of spots available. I brought it to the city manager's attention, and we discussed it for a little bit. I realized that Mr. Chapman said that he didn't want to, he didn't want to fill up the Rotary Park with a lot more signs, but I thought maybe a sign on the, maybe where they talk about the fishing pond when they go in. He also mentioned to me that the new police chief would, since we don't have a Parks and Recreation type enforcement person that goes around anymore, perhaps the, perhaps the police department could go through there a couple of times without a sign. I don't know what the police department would actually be enforcing if there's no sign. Tonight, when I got to the meeting, Mr. Chapman said to me, the signs are now being, they are in production. I kind of wanted to see maybe a monetary fine of some kind if you park on the grass. Mr. Chapman said to me that we'd have to have an ordinance for that. I feel comfortable now that the signs will go up. If we could still reach out to the police chief and say, could you just have somebody, if you have some of your officers just patrol there a little more there, because I mean, it's really getting torn up down there. I just was going to have the discussion with the commission if they were okay with putting some signs up, but Mr. Chapman says they are in production now, and I believe they'll be going up. That's all I had to say. Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Bosvis Wrath, you had.
Yes, I noticed that, too, as well, Commissioner Miller. I'm wondering, did we not have huge rocks down there that kind of blocked people from parking on the grass? Weren't there boulders or rocks or something, so you?
I believe a couple, I believe a few years ago, there were some rocks down there, but I didn't see them. I sat down there and fished the other couple Saturdays ago for about four hours. I did not see anyone patrol and look for it, and I didn't see the big rocks.
No, I don't think they're there anymore. I don't know what happened to them, but I mean, that would be kind of a fix if there were, you know, they put rocks in different places to stop people from going through or parking. If we put the big boulders there, cars can't park there. I don't know. Just my idea.
We're looking in there. We see if there's anything kind of structural-wise that we may be able to put in place.
Benches, maybe? I don't know.
We got enough benches. We can put some up. Maybe that would work.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Just wanted to correct you on one thing, Commissioner Miller. Police chief's been here for a week now, so his honeymoon is over.
I didn't have, I did not have a discussion with the police. That was a suggestion from Mr. Chapman, since we don't have it anymore to have a park and recreations, that perhaps that maybe somebody else could patrol it and check it out for us. But without a sign, what, I mean, what are they going to enforce if there's no sign that says, don't park there?
Yeah. Thanks for the input.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Done with this item, Commissioner?
I am. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thanks. All right. Moving on to F, Communications, Number 2. City Manager Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next is a request from the Splash Pad Committee to give a project update and make a couple of asks to the commission. The in attendance with us is the Splash Pad Committee represented by several different individuals. I believe tonight, Mr. Nepper will be their spokesperson. At some point, there is a list of people that want to make comments regarding the Splash Pad project, so I'm not sure at which point you would like to do that, Mr. Mayor, but maybe it'd be best to have Mr. Nepper do an intro and kind of walk through the project. I can roll through the share screen and do the presentation with him.
Perfect.
All right. Go ahead, Justin.
When Justin's done, then we'll go to the comments from the general public, and then we can have the commission wrap it up.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me all right? Um, Justin Nepper here. I am working with the Splash Pad a little bit on both fundraising, as well as various kind of helping the project along. I got involved here over the last year or so with Splash Pad. One of the most interesting things about the Splash Pad, it was started right before COVID hit. There was a lot of community momentum, a lot of fundraising going on. And of course, COVID kind of put the pause on everything, but since the snow has melted, people are back full swing. A lot of fundraising is going on, a lot of community involvement is going on, and I know that the Splash Pad Committee came to the, to the commission, I believe, last year, and there was a number of questions about various costs and various things that might be involved. So, we're going to talk about that a little bit. One thing I wanted to mention right before I jumped into the slideshow here, that is, now that I am a dad, I just, last year, I have an 11-year-old stepdaughter and a new little baby boy that's born, I've been suddenly very much more aware of our parks and our playgrounds and various things in our community. And I just wanted to say thank you to the city and to the Parks Department, Dan Wires, and all the folks that have done so much work keeping our parks and playgrounds a place for people to go. Before, I only got married a year ago, and before that, I was pretty, I just had my blinders on about downtown, and that was about it. So, I'm learning a lot about all the great amenities that we have to offer. That's really what the Splash Pad Committee is all about, is about taking our, one of our top parks and playgrounds and turning it into even greater place-making area by adding a splash pad. There's very little water options besides Sherman Park Beach, which is a great place for people to go. Otherwise, our community pools have kind of suffered, and that's across the country, I think. In a lot of small towns, public pools don't really exist, and community pools really struggle. But one of the biggest things about Project Playground, especially with the new Meridian Apartment Complex that's coming in, you have a lot of housing that's developing around Project Playground or has developed around Project Playground, so it's a great place for people and kids and families to go. Um, so I think it looks like there's an email up, Mr. Chapman, if you can switch PowerPoint. No problem. All right. That was my little intro. So, you can go to Slide 2. And this shows you the location. There's a lot of talk about the location of the Splash Pad. It's right, currently, the plan is to have it right in front of the parking lot, in between the playground area and the parking lot. Off to the north is the Rotary Club's proposed bathroom location, public restroom location, which has been in the process of being funded and developed over a number of years. Recently, the Splash Pad Committee and Rotary Club got together and really talked about how we can best utilize the water connections that were installed back in 2019 for the restrooms, as well as how new water and sewer would be installed that would really flow through both projects together. So, the other thing is, we were, there was a plan with the Splash Pad to be closer to where the bathrooms currently sit. We realized that it was a pretty big drop-off to the woods there, and there was a lot of kind of swampy, watery areas, so to save money, the plan was to put it more on the flat ground up at the parking lot, and it will also make it much more ADA accessible for people on wheelchairs, kids that might have disabilities that might, that would be better able to enjoy the Splash Pad. You can go to the next slide. This is just a quick overview of a number of where the budget is at, and I'm not going to go into too much detail here, but the top line kind of talks about the major costs of the company, the purchase of the Splash Pad equipment from Vortex, which is the Splash Pad Company, as well as the hardware, concrete, sand, filler, the excavating that has to be done, engineering that has to be done, utilities staff that we brought in, as well as the ongoing water costs. The total project cost is estimated at $243,000, with $208,000 planned in donations and $35,000 in in-kind donations that are currently being talked about. That's a lot of labor that's currently being talked about with various companies in town that are willing to do both concrete work, as well as excavation work. And that is all going very well. The Community Foundation, Debbie Jones, and other people on the Splash Pad Committee have been working very hard, reaching out, and talking to various companies in town, and a lot of people are really excited about being involved in helping us move forward. You can go to the next slide. This slide gets into some of the water consumption, which was a big discussion point from what I recall from the commission last time. We want you guys to be very comfortable knowing if you approve a Splash Pad, really going forward. We know, you know better than anything that when there is a new amenity added to a public space, it costs money, and it costs money in labor. in labor as well as in water and everything else. So this is both from the Vortex Company as well as studies that are done on the maximal consumption that's estimated. If it was running twenty-four hours a day, if there were kids standing, I'm sorry, eight, eight hours per day, eighty-four days of sun in the top column, if it was running non-stop and kids were constantly pushing the button to run water, there, there would be an estimate of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty cubic feet, eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty gallons a day with a max cost based on what we understood was the water rate at the moment, I think, or at least a few months ago when we talked to the city about it, estimated eleven thousand, five hundred and thirty-two dollars a year. And then there was some math done showing more of a realistic cost, thinking about rain days that usually happen in the summer months, and the fact that there's not gonna be kids there eight hours straight every single day, and so that was estimated down to a more realistic cost of seventy-five percent of that total at eighty-six hundred and fifty dollars. Right now, the Splash Pad, we'll get into this a tiny bit more, but Splash Pad Committee is really trying to make sure that the city is not in a position of having to pay that water bill right off the bat. So there's been a tremendous amount of work to secure five-year pledges from various businesses, organizations, and companies to help make sure that the water is fully paid for for the first five years, so that the city could ease into providing that amenity to the public after five years. And you can go to the next slide. This breaks down kind of our dream fundraising scenario, if you will. A lot of it is already underway. We currently raised thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. That was actually mostly raised before the COVID hit. That was raised in 2019, a lot of it. There was a lot of, um, a big goal from the Splash Pad Committee to secure a donation from the Youth Recreation Fund. I know that's going through a lot of changes in the Community Services Board that was in existence, um, I think last fall. And there was plans on getting, I think, some of the funding donated from that fund. We know that there's, or I've heard that there's a little bit of changes going on in the budget. It's the Splash Pad Committee's wish that the city would still be willing to pledge as about, it's under ten percent of the total cost of the budget, at two hundred and forty-three thousand, twenty thousand dollars from, from either the Youth Recreation Fund, if that money is still available, or, and/or Sioux Seal Recreation Funds. Something where if the community is pulling together ninety percent of the cost of construction, that, that we could potentially see the city put in approximately ten percent. Thirty-five thousand dollars in in-kind donations and in-kind labor is being projected, and that's based on a lot of discussions with a number of local companies. And then the big one, and this is where I probably would be involved with my little part of the committee and project is with a patronicity fundraiser. That's been used successfully now multiple times. In Sioux St. Marie, we started with the Sioux Mural Project a number of years ago. The Malcolm Fields Project, the Sioux Locks just did a, a little one to get money for the dioramas in the Sioux Locks Park. That's a fifty percent match from the MEDC if we raise fifty percent. And we are hoping to launch that if the city gives us the green light soon, and a lot of the, tremendous amount of pledges are already in place based on that program starting. And then the final item is currently really moving forward well with this, what we're calling a Water and Repair Legacy Fund. Fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars would be raised in pledges that would go towards annual costs for the first five years, for whether it's valve repairs, whether it's, you know, small other little repairs that come up, as well as the water bill for those first five years. So and any excess funds that we raise above and beyond would go to that, towards that legacy fund. And you can go to the next slide. And this just breaks down a little bit of what's being planned and, and is currently underway. The Chippewa County Community Foundation received a ten thousand dollar donation, I believe, last year from a, an individual that wanted to fund the Splash Pads. That's secured funding. The foundation itself has pledged ten thousand dollars. The Sioux Tribe Youth Endowment Fund is currently being, is under discussion, and that's a ten thousand dollar goal that we have. There was also two percent funding a few years ago that was applied. Walmart has pledged five thousand dollars, and as an aside, I believe over fifty Walmart volunteers had to be involved in order to get a five thousand dollar Walmart pledge. And those volunteers have been working like crazy at Project Playground, painting, cleaning, weeding over the last few weeks. And have done a huge amount of work up there, really, really making it look great. And I believe that Walmart just asked the employees to volunteer at their own time, so that's, that's been huge. And then the community goal of twenty-five thousand dollars that would come from as part of the patronicity campaign. And, and then the Water Repair Legacy Fund of fifty-seven thousand five with eighteen thousand dollars already pledged as of last week for that legacy fund. So we're making a lot of big, big progress and catching up and getting to speed quickly with our fundraising. And you can go to the next slide. This is a quick timeline of where the Splash Pad Committee is hoping to go if the project is able to move forward. They were planning on attending the Community Services Board that wasn't held back in April. Today is this presentation on June twenty-first. The goal would be to purchase the Splash Pad hardware by July thirtieth to lock in existing pricing. Everybody knows pricing for equipment, supplies, materials, all of that is shooting up all the time, so we're trying to work with Vortex to lock in their price, use some of the funding that we've currently raised to purchase the, the hardware. We would want to launch the patronicity campaign to raise that hundred thousand dollars from the community in September, and then build, uh, build in May of twenty-twenty-two and have it ready to roll by summer twenty-twenty-two. And then the last slide. I believe it's the last slide after that. So the big ask from the Splash Pad Committee, we know that the city's, you know, always in a spot where you guys are working hard to make sure that you're being responsible with your funds. We are looking for a few big things. The biggest in terms of cash would be that Community Services Fund, Youth Recreation Fund money if it's available, and/or Sioux Seal Recreation funding. Regardless, you know, we know that this is a program that the community supports, but this would help us really jumpstart our patronicity campaign and show that there is community, public support from the city. So that would be a twenty thousand dollar pledge that would go towards the, the project. A grinder pump is listed there. We are fairly certain from what we understood that the city had budgeted to install a grinder pump for Rotary bathrooms a few years ago. And I wasn't able to find out if that funding is still in place, but we were thinking it was a capital project. And that was approximately between nine and eleven thousand dollars back then from what I heard. But that would be a cost to help lift the, the, the water sewer that would come from both the Rotary bathrooms as well as the Splash Pad up and out to the street because of the elevation change there. It's a little bit lower than the street. And then, and then the other two items there are not necessarily have a cost, but just the coordination with bringing utilities on site would involve city engineering in terms of time and support with the engineering firm that's offering in-kind services for Splash Pad, BME, would coordinate with the city to make sure we're doing things right in terms of utility installation. And then just, you know, general moral support, you know, for the patronicity campaign, sharing it on the city's Facebook page, things like that. But that's, uh, that's that first column. The second column is what we understand from Vortex would be the maintenance cost, the labor, the, the hidden labor cost, if you will. Because of the Splash Pad being fairly minimal in terms of its size and it being a flow-through Splash Pad, it is estimated that there would only be two to three hours of maintenance for startup, and then only two to three hours of maintenance for shutdown seasonally, approximately four to six hours total for city park staff to turn it on and turn it off. And that's something we're asking the city to consider providing in year one. Then the final column shows that we're asking the city to take on the full cost of the water, estimated at that realistic number of about eighty-five hundred dollars a year in year six. And that's where the, you know, the, the city's commitment would really to provide this for the public, for those new apartments that are going in by the airport, for the existing folks in our community to enjoy. That would be where your cost really hits kind of full swing. And then that little white box there shows that Vortex warranties, the equipment, two-year, five-year, ten-year, and twenty-five-year warranty. That is all I have for the presentation, and I'm wide open to questions. I know there's a lot of people that want to talk as well, so I will leave it up to you guys on if you have any questions.
All right. Thanks, Justin. I think what we'll do is go to members of the public now, and then after that, we will go to the commission. If they have any questions, we'll have you unmute and answer those, so. We'll go back in order, I think. Jeff Basista from Sioux St. Marie was number one in the queue. So Jeff, you there?
Yes, I am, Don. Thank you. For everybody that is in on this call, I am a member of the Community Services Board, and I'm in full support of the city investing this twenty thousand dollars into this capital improvement for child, youth activity. I mean, in my mind, it fits in an area that is already zoned for the youth with the ball fields, with the playground, the trails, Rotary going in with the bathrooms, as well as the existing bathrooms that are there. It's really a nice overall project that's being put together here. So I am in support of this, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Appreciate your attendance. Amanda, tonight.
I want to thank Justin for presenting that awesome presentation that sums up our project very well. I am one of the founding members of the Sioux Splash Pad Committee and the co-chair. I want to just voice my support. I'm here to tell you that we've worked very hard to secure donations, and that's what has really fueled us for the last few months is, is the community outreach and the support that we're receiving from organizations. For letting us present again tonight, supportive of Splash Pad, that's all.
Andy, you broke up a little bit there, but I think you're good.
Yep. Uh, thanks, Amanda. Appreciate it. Michelle Callahan.
Hi there. I might end up turning the camera off, because I, I just think my connection's not that good, but I just wanted to say thank you. I don't know if Dan is on the call, but my first experience with all you guys was like maybe four or five years ago when we wanted to put a little free library in, and I was like super scared, and everybody from the CSB, like Dan Wires and and the city council were just amazing, and it really kind of was so exciting for my kids to see how things worked. We didn't have to put a lot of effort in. It was thirty-five dollars that we asked for, but you put the pole and stuff, and I just wanted to say that, that it really I just hope other community members see like, it's, it's a great thing to participate in this process. This one has taken a little longer, but I still really appreciate it. I'm gonna turn my camera off. It's just coming in and out. Can you hear me?
Yes, yep.
Just keep going. Anyway, Lisa and Amanda, in particular, worked very hard on this, and I just wanted to make a public comment to say that I appreciated them. Just watching them work so hard towards this while working as nurses and as throughout COVID, everything. It was just, uh, it was very touching. It was very great to see how invested you are in the community, guys. Also, Debbie Jones and Mr. Nepper, that was an awesome presentation. So why a public comment? I'm on the board. They already said everything. But I have some reasons myself as a community member. I think pocket parks, like Splash Pads, are like the community pools of the seventies when people finally got together around a medium and enjoyed each other from different social and economic areas. And even, and this is why I'm on here, I work with children with various abilities and disabilities. People people with physical disabilities are not a small proportion of the community here. We just don't see them very much because we don't have a lot of social engagements for them. And I really believe that the Splash Pad will get kids out of their homes and the community around there. I live in that immediate community. And I know a lot of children and families who have had a lot of adversity in their lives, and I do, I love the park side. That's why we put the little free library there. But I think that the Sioux Splash Pad water calls people out. It calls people to it, the Splash Pad. You hear people laughing, having a good time. And the setup for the Splash Pad is very inclusive. Children with physical difficulties that, I don't just mean wa, um, wheelchairs, I mean other physical disabilities, children with autism or other social issues where parents are sometimes afraid to bring their children to certain parks. The water, everybody's screaming and having fun. People don't stand out. But even more than that, um, you know, you guys, you did such a great job giving that forty thousand for years and my kids have been in it, and we've coached it, Sioux soccer, baseball, and it was awesome because it did help a lot of kids that were kind of on the fringe of economics, be able to go to camps. I know I'm probably out of time, but I just want to say that, um, there are still probably hundreds of kids around that area, and I do mean that because I work with them, who aren't gonna go. They're not going to soccer, even with a little stipend, but they can walk over to the Splash Pad. And it, and the data is hard to get on something like that, but I'm telling you, the data would be there if we could. Getting out in the sunshine, vitamin D, running around, people talking to people they would never talk to. That's helpful to community. That builds community, and we're only as strong as our weakest link. So I know you're behind this, and it almost brings me to tears. Thank you for those of you that said that. It's, it's very heartwarming, and it makes me love this community even more. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate the comments. Jocelyn Burke.
So I live way out in the country, and I'm just hoping that you can hear me from my whole little spiel here. So some of you may already know me, but I work for Sioux Schools as an intervention specialist. And in my role, I work with our most at-risk youth. So I'm at Washington Elementary. I work with ages four through eight. And prior to that entire adult life, I've worked with at-risk youth. Prior to working in the school system, I worked for community mental health with intellectually disabled children. So this is, children are just near and dear to my heart. The reason I'm in attendance this evening is to request that you consider funding the Splash Pad for our area youth. Many of the children that I work with don't have equal and equitable access to extracurricular activities in the area. The current activities that are available, such as soccer, baseball, dance, hockey, all of those great things, they're quite costly for families, and I, I service the most at-risk families who are barely making it financially. So not only do they have financial needs, they also have children with physical disabilities perhaps. They have many barriers to all of their, to getting all of their needs met. As Michelle had said, that having the Splash Pad right in the location that is being proposed, that takes away the barrier of children getting there because they can just walk. Many of our families don't have access to vehicles to get to some of our, our, our beautiful areas that we have, that many people can access. Our most low-income students and children cannot. I do, I, I make sure children get food every week. That is the level of, of at risk that these children are. And so if a family can't meet their most basic needs, food, clothing, shelter, all those things, then they're certainly not going to be able to afford those other extracurricular activities. And I just want to share real quick, it's kind of on that. I have, I have a seven-year-old who tasted a strawberry, a fresh strawberry, for the very first time in her entire life because I was able to receive a grant. That is the level of poverty some of our children are living in. A Splash Pad kind of would level the playing field for those children. It's an opportunity for all children, regardless of economic status, physical ability or intellectual but, ability to access extracurricular activities that, that are just vital to their physical and mental well-being, and then provides fun and community and pride for all. So, um, I just, I kind of wanted to, to So um, I just, I kind of wanted to, to just pop on and kind of show you from my point of view. That um, that this is a great idea for our community and I could see how it could benefit many of our area youth. And I just ask that you please consider the request for that funding. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Jocelyn. Uh, next is Abby Bell.
All right. Hi, everybody. Um, I am not a member of the Sioux Splash Pad Committee, but I am a member of the Community Services Board. And I have been on that board for the past three years. It's been a really awesome opportunity to kind of see how. Funding works from the commission directly to the youth recreation programs in our area. Um, and I, I do, uh. I guess I'm speaking here tonight in support of um, giving that $20,000 that needs to be allocated by June 30th to the Sioux Splash Pad. Um, quite a few of our past month's meetings have been canceled very last notice for the Community Services Board. Um, which is a little bit concerning when we do have that $20,000 that needs to be allocated. So. Um, I would just say that a specific and physical, physical capital improvement to a city park that directly benefits youth recreation. Would meet the requirement of how I believe those funds um, have to be allocated to be legal and lawful for the city. So. Um, I would just say that I would hope the commission would give that money to the Sioux Splash Pad to specifically purchase. The physical equipment that would be on location. Um, and thank you to everyone. Justin, that was a great presentation and a huge kudos to the Sioux Splash Pad. Sioux Splash Pad Committee for all of their dedication and hard work. It's awesome to see those community volunteers.
Thank you very much, Abby. Um, we'll move on to Lisa Young.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lisa Young and I'm one of the um, Sioux Splash Pad Committee members as well and I'm the one of the founding co-chairs. Um, I just wanted to remind the commission of some benefits that having a splash pad would bring to our community. Some of this is a bit redundant. Um, but a splash pad will be accessible to all, including those with wheelchairs and various special needs. Um, it will be a community improvement and it will draw families to our area. It encourages outdoor play. Um, which we don't get enough of. Our kids don't get that enough now. Um, and we also see post-COVID how important that is. To have outdoor recreational opportunities. And um, it gives our local kids something more to do, which I believe our community is always asking for. And we just ask that the commission support the efforts of the community to bring a splash pad to Sault Ste Marie and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. And Sabrina, have you?
So I'm, I apologize too. I was just at the dentist, so I feel like I'm awkward speaking, but um. I'm not on the splash, splash pad committee. Um, I'm uh, the children and teen librarian here at the public library, Bayless Public Library. I also am a volunteer on the youth mental health committee. Um, locally also to here and just the things I've learned this past, these past two years on mental health and how much. A lot of things that the splash pad will provide for our community, um, like time spent outside, um, you know, social connectedness. Stop, social connectedness with up, with others. Um, and also too, just echoing what others have mentioned, um, but that is just such a barrier-free. Um, way for community members of all ages to utilize those services. So I definitely think it's an amazing use of your funds and. I just want to thank all the people that have been a part of this. Um, I've tried, just as a community member, I've tried to help out and support where possible. And I'm really excited. Um, I think it would just speak volumes, uh, seeing the city support something like this because I know. Um, in a lot of situations I've been in, uh, you know, that's one of the things, common complaints I hear people saying that. You know, there's nothing to do, nothing to do, especially for children. Um, but, and sometimes it's, well, you gotta kind of be aware of what events are going on, but sometimes it is that barrier of. Uh, you know, money for soccer, for sports, for hockey, um, or ability rides to get places when a parent might work a lot. So. I just think it is amazing thing. Thank you guys so much for hopefully supporting this project.
Thanks, Sabrina. And I think we've gone through the list. Uh. Looks like Tiffany maybe didn't get in on the initial. Is that why you have the hand up, Tiffany? Tiffany, did you want to speak on?
There we go. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Um, hi, I'm Tiffany Asherick. I am one of the Sioux Splash Pad Committee members. Yeah, my daughter had a public comment.
Yeah. So um, a couple of reasons why I wanted um, us to have a splash pad is because. A, not a lot of people can afford or um, just have splash pads in their yard. I mean, sprinklers or pools in their yard. And um, because it, I think it'd just be really fun and um. And we wouldn't have to drive down to see, all the way to St. Ignace to uh, play in one. Because we can use one. And, and for a birthday, we, someone could go there, stuff like that, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming and giving your input. Okay, did I miss anybody on the list? All right. I think I had a lot of good discussions, so let's move on to the city commission. Commissioners, any questions or comments for city manager or? Um, Dustin Nepper. Commissioner Tawry.
I'll go first. I see everybody else kind of.
Yeah, I just thought they popped up late.
That's okay. A great presentation, everybody, and and great comments and uh, thank you Tiffany for having your daughter speak. That was adorable. If uh, something doesn't tug at your heart, it's a, it's a child, right? Um, so I am, I can't get over the work that Lisa and Amanda have done. It's really overwhelming. You girls have no stop in you whatsoever. And to think that you are coming so close to achieving your goals, congratulations. I mean, this has been a lot of work on you and we know that the city has asked for a lot. And you've come through and your organization and how you continue to come back. I, I just think this project is really turning out to be a great thing. I do, I am concerned about. Um, do you happen to know, Brian, if there is an increase in the cost for the grinder pump? That would be my first question.
Uh, the grinder pump is about $8,000, $10,000 depending on the size that we'll need. I guess, what was your question? What do you mean?
If there was an increase in cost, because when you originally budgeted it years ago. I'm wondering if the cost of that has gone up or if it is budgeted or when are, I guess, when the splash pad is probably looking at 2022, maybe installation. Will we have to fit it into the budget at some point and um, you're prepared for that?
There are some CIP funds that we might pull from to do this. Um, if the commission wants to move forward with this, we'll find the funds for it.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then the only other thing I was going to say is it, this actually seems to me to be more of like a Sioux SEAL fund project. And I'm more in favor of using SEAL funds, like the $20,000 from the SEAL funds and then not, because I would. I thought for sure that the Community Services Board, the $20,000 had gone back. But I, Brian did say that it is still sitting there, but I, I, I think that this is more of like a Sioux SEAL project. That's what the SEAL fund was set up for. That's why it has, we have that fund sitting there. So I'm more in favor of pulling the $20,000 out of there. And I believe right for now, that's the only comments and questions that I have. I might have some after somebody else speaks.
And just real quick, just a comment on the SEAL estate, this project would qualify for those funds, the brick and mortar aspect of it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Boss was wrath.
Hi, great job, you guys. Um, I just want to be transparent to everybody. Um, I was on the committee in the beginning. Um, of this project, but I have stepped down, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, I know you guys have worked so hard and I applaud your efforts. I mean, this is a long process and. Um, a lot of organization, uh, Justin, great job on the presentation. Um, quick question and you might have said it and I might have known from before, but I just want to ask. What is the warranty on the parts of the actual splash pad, like the, the on-top things?
Let me just pull, I'm just pulling up the list really quickly.
Yep, you're fine. I was going to ask the parts and then the pad itself, the, the flooring of it is, does it come with a warranty or is that kind of?
Sure. Yeah, so the warranty, Vortex offers a, a two-year warranty on the finishes, the plumbing components. The mechanisms and hardware, the polymer plastic items, uh, and the galvanized steel structures, the actual sprinklers and all that. That's a two-year warranty. Five-year on all of the aluminum brass and polymer panels and I actually don't, I get, I don't quite know. Exactly what components are what, but the small, you know, pretty much there are some that will wear out the quickest. That's under a two-year warranty. And then uh, there's a five-year on some of the metals, 10 years on all the structural stainless steel that holds everything in place. And, and the welding of that, where the welds on the metal that has under a 10-year warranty. And then all the tubing that runs under and around uh, to all the items, the stainless steel tubing, that's a 25-year warranty.
Okay.
So um, yes, and your, your other part, your, did you say one other part of the question?
Yeah, the floor. Is it the, yeah, is it the concrete pad or is it the um, the floor, you know, like the?
Yeah, they're planning on, we're currently planning on a con, from what I understand, a concrete pad that would be uh, constructed. By local contractors and then they would just really do a nice uh, smooth coat on that. I believe that's, you know. We'll have to talk with them about the proper amount of joints and um. You know, expansion joints, but it should be as long as concrete lasts on there.
Okay, perfect. Um, yeah, I, I'm in support of this project. I just want to throw that out there. I think it's amazing. It's something this community needs. Um, I too work for some families that, you know, have some difficulties and stuff, so I get it. I understand it. I think it's a great location. I do like. That you moved it from kind of over on the side to in front. Um, I think it'll also be, you know, less buggy. Um, stuff like that, so it's not so close to the woods. Um, so I, I think you guys are doing a great job, so I applaud you and. I think this is exactly what the community needs, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, any other commissioners? Commissioner Collins.
So if the um, hardware or infrastructure for this project can come from the SEAL fund, what about the 11,500 annually? After the five years is up for the splash pad committee's commitment?
Yeah, we have to come out of the operation budget for the general fund for the Parks and Rec Department.
Okay, so that's, that's where I'm going to run into a problem because even though I think this is a great project and I love all the work that they've done for this. Uh, right now, I mean, we're currently understaffed at the fire department. So literally, if you're looking at five years out, if we're not able to fund. Uh, our fire department adequate staff, then how can we justify putting $11,500 into a project? Um, even though it's well-intended and so forth, that's not one of our priorities as far as a government. Our priority is public safety. And infrastructure. So that's going to be the, that's going to be the biggest issue for me. If there was a way that they could figure out a way to. Continue, continue the annual of funding for this um, over a period of time, or if we can pull some of the funds like um. Commissioner Tawry was talking about, like from the SEAL funds or some other fund that we have out there that um, doesn't affect the general fund, then I would be in support of it. But right now with the way we are short-staffed with the fire department and the conversations we had about that, I can't see um, supporting the $11,500 after the five years is up. That's my comments.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Miller has his hand up.
Thank you, Your Honor. I unfortunately have to agree with Commissioner Collins's comments. I believe when uh. Before the pandemic, when uh, the uh, the issue came up regarding this, I, I think one of our concerns was uh. Voting for, voting in favor of something like this and, and hanging future commissions on for a, a huge water bill. And like Commissioner Collins said, when we're, when we're having problems staffing our fire department right now. I don't want anyone in the Splash Pad Committee to think I'm against this because I am so in favor of this and I just think your efforts have been so great, but. The, the one big issue is where does the money come from year after year after year when we're having trouble staffing uh, not just the fire department, but uh, other departments in the city? Uh, that's, that's where I'm going to have a small problem with it and uh, thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Talentino or Bauer, any questions or comments?
Having trouble unmuting. Can you hear me?
Nah, we can now.
Okay. Uh, my only comment, I guess, is that, you know, could we not possibly? Put some sort of a cap on the amount of, uh, you know, because, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but that water bill was only projected. For like 84 days of continuous usage of child after child after child kept that thing going, right? Or am I wrong?
No, I'm going to pull up the um, the slide here real quick that was in the presentation. Just give me a second. Should be on your screen. Can you see it?
Uh, let me try to blow that up a little bit.
Sorry, but yes, essentially, essentially the original math was 11,000 or so gallons per day for 84 days, eight hours per day. But assuming that that's not 100%, that would be full capacity all 84 days, which may be unrealistic during weekdays. Um, so they brought it down to about 75%, which would be about 8,600.
Right. So I mean, you know, maybe it would be more palatable to the commission if we put some sort, if we. You know, put a cap on that amount of money. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any other, Commissioner Talentino, do you have any comments?
No, I'm all set, Your Honor. Thank you very much.
All right. My screen was split. I couldn't see everybody. Um, and I just have a couple of comments and I just wanted to congratulate the committee. Uh, we met with them. I don't even remember how long ago it was. It was before COVID, I think, wasn't it, City Manager? Yes, sir. And, and we had a very good and frank discussion and uh, gave some direction and uh, they've done a excellent job at uh. Rallying the troops and putting together a, a plan and putting together a much, uh, a very organized approach and. And uh, I certainly appreciate that. Uh, I am optimistic uh, of their uh, goals and, and other plan and. But I do share the concerns that uh, Mr. Collins and Miller and others have mentioned that uh. Legacy costs are, are difficult and uh, you know, over a 10-year period, you're talking about well over $100,000 worth of uh, city commitment. Uh, for another park, so um, I think uh, you know, they've done a great job and there are some of these components that we certainly could work within and. I think Commissioner Tawry's suggestion, the SEAL funds be used in lieu of the 20,000 that the Community Services Board had. I, I think that's uh. A great uh, suggestion and uh. Something uh, worth looking at and, and not 100% sure what the process would be. Is that a ask through the SEAL Board or does that come directly? In front of the commission, City Manager? And I'm not even sure what the availability of uh, annual funding is right now for the SEAL Fund.
Uh, so I'll start to answer and uh, Mr. Wires, if I say anything wrong, you can chime in here, but. The SEAL estate expenditures for projects like this runs through the commission. Dan, is that correct? You know what? Dan has been having some microphone issues on his computer. We ran into this last couple of weeks, a staff meeting. Robin, are you aware?
There's the uh, SEAL Estate Trust. That would review requests, but commission would have ultimate authority.
And I would say, yes, that if, if the commission wanted to pursue the $20,000 from the SEAL estate, those funds are there.
All right. Thank you, City Manager. So I think that would probably be the most appropriate uh, funding source uh, for uh. Improving an asset within cities in Sault Ste Marie and the recreation. improving an asset within City of Sault Ste. Marie in the recreation area because that's what that uh, was intended for. And that money comes from uh, earnings from the uh, bequeathed uh, estate. Um, I think it's uh, it has a lot of merit and I appreciate the fact that uh, they looked at uh, fully paying for five years' worth of water. That does, there's no guarantee that in five years that our uh, budget deficit will uh, not still be there. We certainly are optimistic that City Manager and uh, the administration will uh, pull us through this. Uh, well, it's unfortunate that this has happened during a year of uh, uh, decreasing revenues, I guess you'd call it, or stagnant revenues and, and uh, increasing expenses and, and a year when we've had a tremendous uh, budget uh, difficulty. So any other questions or comments from the Commission? So there wasn't a, uh, is there a specific uh, request for action on this item as far as, I know they had some asks, but uh, I know we didn't have any recommendations from City Manager, but I think you were looking to uh, see what the, the fault of the Commission is.
So this would fall under our donation policy. What we would do, because this is a large one and it sounds like the Commission may want to pursue the SEAL Estate Funds rather than these uh, uh, leftover youth recreation funding. Uh, the Commission can direct me to start working on an agreement. We can get that done the next couple of weeks with uh, Debbie Jones, Justin Epper and Splash Pad Committee, so that we can bring some into the Commission for consideration. Um, again, that's if the Commission's behind this. Um, while we do that, I would say that wouldn't necessarily prevent them from um, starting their uh,
Patronicity?
Yes, their patronicity campaign while we're doing the, the uh, paperwork there. So the, the point, purpose of the agreement would just be lay out uh, Vortex being their vendor, who the project managers are, um, just kind of stipulating. Um, possibly SEAL, SEAL Estate Funds kind of being the last monies into the program. Um, possibly contingent on them making all of their donations or at least showing commitment of their donations. Um, so I, if that, that's how I would proceed if the Commission would like to move forward is to direct uh, direct myself to start working on the paperwork for the um, the final acceptance donation. Again, we can get that probably wrapped up and on the first meeting in July. And then we can go forward from there. And again, if we move forward that way, it allows them to start their patronicity campaign, campaign.
So is there anybody to make a motion to uh, agree in concept uh, to the twenty thousand dollar donation from the SEAL Fund if uh, funds are available and if the process allows and to allow them to uh, move through their patronicity campaign and negotiate with the uh, City Manager as far as what benchmarks we need to see prior to commitment from the City of Sault Ste. Marie? Commissioner Bosworth-Rath?
I can make the motion.
Is there support?
I'll support, but I, I do have a question if I could, please.
Sure.
Is there a way that then when we're also talking about future legacy costs that um, I agree with Commissioner Bauer, that maybe we take a look at what the Commission is willing to consider for water moving forward or for any sort of cost moving forward? You know, we have thirty-seven parks in Sault Ste. Marie and I just get concerned it's just going to be another park sitting there. So um, so I'm not sure how to, maybe when that comes back to the Commission, maybe we can talk about that at that point, or should we be talking about it more now?
Maybe Commissioner Bosworth-Rath would like to include that in her motion to have the City Manager negotiate all the terms and conditions?
That sounds good.
I'll support that.
Definitely, okay. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Collins?
I just want to make sure we're not committing to eleven thousand five hundred dollars after the five-year time period, are we?
We're committing to have the City Manager negotiate an agreement and get it approved by the City Commission prior to execution.
Okay, so we're basically saying we're okay with where we are right now, but we're not committing any funding at this point.
More or less, we can finalize the donation agreement that would stipulate and dictate all those terms.
It has to come back to us for approval prior to execution.
I just want to make sure because I'm voting no if this in any way, shape or form commits us to paying anything towards this project other than the twenty thousand dollars from the SEAL Fund at this point.
This one, again, this one would just give us the, the forward direction to start working with the representatives of the Committee to finalize with the next couple of weeks, the, the um, the acceptance of the donation for Commission consideration. So no, I wouldn't say it would tie you to any funding at this time. It's just the next step forward.
Okay, no, you, you say, you wouldn't say that, but I want you to say that it's not going to commit us and then I'll be good. Tell me it's not going to commit us, Ryan.
It's not committing you. So the next step?
Gotcha.
I mean, yeah, it's not committing you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the question. Commissioner Miller?
The, the motion still seems a little ambiguous to me. I'd like, uh, can Robin read it back to us? I'd like to know what I'm going to vote yes or no on.
Thank you, Commissioner. We can tidy it up a little bit. Uh, Deputy City Manager, how do you?
Sorry, Robin.
That's okay. So I have a motion to support the Splash Pad Concept and authorize the City Manager to negotiate the terms and conditions of the agreement. But I, I would, my one question would be if they're authorizing to initiate the patronicity grant, but the Commission is not fully in support of the project.
That's a, that's a good point. I guess if we wrap this up in the next couple of weeks, we bring it back to the Commission, the first meeting in July, then once that's approved, they could start the patronicity campaign pending the approval of that contract. Yeah.
Good point.
Yeah.
We're going to table it for now.
I think we're directing the uh, City Manager to uh, work out an agreement, negotiate with the uh, Splash Pad Committee and bring it back to us for approval. Knowing that uh, the parameters of uh, are the legacy costs are uh, difficult.
Right, and based on the other comments made by the Commission tonight.
So do you know what your marching orders are, City Manager?
I may have to watch the video tomorrow morning, but I believe I do, yes. So, and I'll say it out loud. So I remember when I watched this again in the morning. So basically what we're doing, there's a motion, the City has a donation policy. We wrote that uh, a while ago now to help us facilitate the process of small donations and large donations. Um, that way there's a consistent process and staff has some guidelines there. So with larger donations such as this, I mean, we're talking about two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in cash and in-kind services. The policy does stipulate that there has to be an agreement that the Commission accepts. And within that agreement, it kind of goes over the project timeline stipulations such as um, what happens if there's a cost overrun, who's responsible for that? Um, within that, we could designate Vortex as their uh, provider and that effect that once the agreement is completed, that they can start their patronosity, patronicity campaign. Uh, we can put some commentary in there about SEAL Estate Funds, that process. So over the next couple of weeks, we could finalize that document for Commission consideration.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? So we do have a motion and support. Does anybody, everybody understand the motion now? Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bosworth-Rath?
Yes.
Motion did pass unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody, for all of your input and your enthusiasm. So moving on to Item G, which is Business Items, uh, number one, City Manager Chapman.
I apologize. Give me one second. I just got to clean out all these windows.
That's okay. I've been flipping between windows too. I've been trying to figure it out.
All right, so what are we on? Business Items, number one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next for Commission Consideration is a request from the DPW Department or for the Cemetery Department for the purchase of a heavy-duty turf cart. Uh, for the purchasing process, this would require bids to go out. We received one bid from uh, Northern Michigan Tractor and Equipment LLC, Johannesburg, Michigan. Um, the bid did fit within our budget as well as the um, then within the budget as well as the specs. So we would look for a motion to award the bid for the purchase in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand two hundred seven ninety-two cents.
Uh, thank you, City Manager. Uh, City Commission, any questions or comments on this particular item? Uh, seeing none, Commissioner Collins, would you like to make this motion?
Make the motion as presented.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bosworth-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, Business Items, number two, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next is a request from the Engineering Department entering into an agreement for stake construction services for the Power Canal Trail Phase One with Alpine Engineering. Uh, boy, I'm having a hard time. Alpine Engineering Incorporated. Uh, this was another service that we solicited bids from local firms. We received one. Uh, the bids fit within the project as well as the scope of services we were looking for. So we would look for a motion under an agreement with Alpine Engineering. I would ask the Commission add on the not to exceed price of ten thousand five hundred. It's not in the original written motion, but I would ask that you include that as well.
Thank you, City Manager. Uh, any questions or comments from the Commission? Commissioner Miller?
I'd like to ask the City Manager if anybody uh, reached out to the other two companies and asked why they didn't put in a bid.
Um, I'm not sure if anybody did. That's not typically something that we do. If somebody doesn't put a bid, they just don't put in a bid and maybe it's conflict with scheduling, maybe they just have too much work going on, but that's not typically something we do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Anybody else? Uh, Commissioner Miller, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, Your Honor, I would. Thank you. A motion to award and authorize the City Manager to execute a contract for the construction staking services for Power Canal Tray, Trail Phase One with Alpine Engineering Incor- Incorporated with the cost not to exceed ten thousand five hundred dollars.
Support.
Has been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Uh, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bosworth-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Collins?
Is he there? Oh, there he is.
Yes, I said yes, but I'm, I don't know.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to, whoops, I better put yes on mine, eh? Business Items, number three, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next for Commission Consideration is an agreement for electrical services related to the downtown placemaking and SXS project. Um, long story short, as you're aware, the bids came back for that particular project way over budget. Um, our Engineering Department had to do my favorite term of value engineering, the project. Um, originally proposed within the project was burying the underground or the above head electrical services. Um, because the cost of conduit and that service was too much, we had cut that from the original project. Um, as we moved forward with the project, we realized that there was some key pieces of electrical infrastructure that would have to move to maintain the parking lot and the road designs that we have in place. Um, so Engineering Department worked with Cloverland to come up with this agreement. Uh, there's some services that we're going to pay for. There's some services that Cloverland are going to pay for. Um, but all in all, there's two motions attached to this particular item. Uh, we're looking for a motion to increase the project budget by twenty-eight thousand two hundred forty-four dollars, which will also uh, shift some funding from the Brady Park Storm Outfall Project, which is budgeted for the next capital year to this project, as well as a motion to approve the General Service Line Extension Agreement with Cloverland. And just a quick note, the Brady Park Storm Outfall Project was a project that would be budgeted for the next fiscal year. There's a uh, an issue on the core property right across the street from my office here. And there was a mutual project between the Engineering Department as well as the Army Corps of Engineers. But as they moved forward with the project, the Army Corps of Engineers just is going to pick up the tab by themselves for the most part. So we had forty thousand dollars budgeted as our share for that project. It sounds like it's only going to be about eight thousand dollars. So we're going to shift some of the money from that original forty thousand dollars to this project. So we look for two motions here, a motion to increase the project with the additional funding coming from the Brady Park Storm Outfall Project. And then a motion to approve the General Service Line Extension Agreement with Cloverland. I'll authorize myself to execute it.
Thank you much, very much, City Manager. Any questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Talentino, would you like to make a, two separate motions?
Sure, Your Honor. Make a motion to increase the project budget to twenty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars to the additional funding from, coming from the Brady Park Storm Outfall Project.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Tordy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes, sorry about that.
That's okay. Commissioner Bosworth-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Uh, motion passed six-one. Commissioner Talentino, second motion?
Motion to approve a General Service Line Extension Agreement with Cloverland Electric and authorize the City Manager to execute the contract.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bosworth-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordy?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to Business Items, number four, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a follow-up item between the three contracts that we negotiated with the three union contracts opened up this year. Uh, this one is the United SEAL Workers, the Fire Captain's Unit in the City of Sault Ste. Marie. Um, not a lot changed in this contract, some language, the deletion of some date-specific terms. We did exchange, or we extended the probationary time for uh, a new coming, new, new fire captain, excuse me. New fire captains, excuse me, new fire captains from three months to six months starting in twenty twenty-two. As well as the two percent wage increase, um, similar to the other contracts that we approved at last meeting. So we would look for a motion to approve the agreement as presented.
Thank you very much, city manager. Any questions or comments from the commission? Uh, Commissioner Twardy, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, uh, motion to approve the agreement as presented.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
Commissioner Baspus Rath.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh. G, business items, number five.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, up next for consideration is a request to execute a recent grant award from Eagle. For eight hundred and fifty-five, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the MAC building. As well as a motion to establish the project for this, the project budget for this project. So. Uh, commission is aware that there was a request to Brownfield, uh, a few months ago to assist in the redevelopment of the MAC building, the downtown area. Uh, part of that had a grant application going to Eagle. Uh, I believe we made notice that it was awarded or possibly gonna be awarded, uh, last commission meeting or two commission meetings ago. But what this item would do is allow the Brownfield Director or EDC Director to execute the agreement. So we would look for two motions. Motion to authorize the Brownfield Executive Director to execute the grant and motion to establish project budget of eight hundred and fifty thousand for the MAC building redevelopment.
Thanks, city manager. Any questions or comments on that one? Commissioner Bauer, would you like to, uh, do the honors?
Sure. I move that we authorize the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Executive Director. To execute the Eagle Grant Agreement.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions? A roll call, please.
Commissioner Baspus Rath.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
First motion passed unanimously, Commissioner Bauer.
As I further move to establish a project budget of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the MAC building redevelopment.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yeah.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
Commissioner Baspus Rath.
Yes.
Motion, motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving right along, business items, number six, one that's near and dear to his heart. City manager.
Actually, I dislike doing these ones. So, uh, up next for commission consideration is a request to approve resolution as presented. Uh, within the resolution, authorizes a two percent wage increase for myself. Uh, based on my evaluation, the commission pleaded, uh, a couple of months ago. It's in line and on par with the non-reps as well as the representative groups. Um, also within the resolution, we discussed it when going over my evaluation. Uh, budgeting costs for an executive coach of my choosing. There's always an opportunity to be a better city manager and grow and learn some more new. Uh, by allowing me to work for the executive coach, I kind of hope to further myself as the city manager. For you all. So, uh, we've discussed this. There didn't seem like there'd be any issues with it. So included, I include both those items in the resolution. So we would look for a resolution or a motion to approve the resolution. As attached.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the city commission?
Motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Thanks, Commissioner. Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
Commissioner Baspus Rath.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Congratulations.
I certainly appreciate it.
Under item G, business items, uh, number seven, consideration of a closed session, city manager.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, up next for commission consideration is a request to go into closed session as soon as we're done with the commissioner comments. To discuss potential leases of real property. This is a permissible use of the closed meetings per the State of Michigan Open Meetings Act. We would look for a motion as, uh, written to be made by the commission and supportive.
Are you needing us to come back into open session after the closed session?
No, sir.
All right. Anybody like to make that motion? Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion entered into closed session in accordance with section eight D of the State of Michigan Open Meetings Act. To consider a potential lease of real property and not coming back in the open session afterwards.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Any questions? Must be unanimous vote. So roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Bauer.
Yes.
Commissioner Baspus Rath.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We will be moving into closed session at the end of our regular meeting. Moving on into item H, which is city manager announcements and updates. City manager, we see you have a brief report tonight.
Yeah, I got a couple of things written down here. Nothing long.
Okay.
It's summertime. Um, a couple of things for the commission. We've included the twenty twenty consumer confidence report. This is an annual report that the water department has to publish. Uh, basically, it is a mechanism that Eagle has us send out to all the residents. To ensure their confidence in the drinking water that they are consuming. Um, nothing major in this one. Last year, there was a few violations due to. Uh, not having proper licenses and certifications, but we cleaned up all those issues. So we're presenting to you a, a, a clean report this time around. Um, the water director that we hired, Mr. Two's. We are not mailing this as a direct mailer to every resident or every customer this year. We are able to promote it on social media and every other medium that we are. So part of this will, uh, part of this report, I was kind of incorporating that, but we will post it on social media. We're gonna put the link in the water bills. We're gonna get the word out that way. So, uh, when you have a chance, uh, review it. If you have any questions, let me know. Just a reminder, all boards meetings are returning to in-person in July. You know, we all just got used to Zoom and we're gonna have to remember to hit the button on the microphone moving forward. But in-person in July, first meeting in July will be on Tuesday because Monday is the holiday. So just make a note of that. Um, and I will be out of the office June twenty-fifth and July second, taking vacation days. So. That's all I have as mayor.
All right. Thanks, city manager. And I wanna, uh, thank you or, or Kirk, whoever wrote the report. It, uh. Looks great. It's easy read and, uh, certainly is nice to see, uh. No, uh, issues with our water quality. So thank you very much. Anybody have any questions or comments for the city manager on his, uh, report or his vacation time? We need to vote on that?
The vacation time? Probably just to make sure I get out of here.
All right. Thank you very much, city manager. Moving on into the item I, which is matters presented by the public. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to present to the city commission? Or have any questions for the city commission at this time? So anybody in the audience that would like to, uh, speak in front of the commission this evening?
Yeah, I would.
Yes, if you could please give us your name and residence, please.
Uh, Rick Clare, uh, Sioux State Marie. I got two questions. One is on the salt shed. That's sitting about a block away from where I live. That was bid out for demolition. I thought last fall and was supposed to be taken to a licensed landfill. Is, is it gonna be used where it's sitting? No, I mean, it can't possibly meet any building codes.
No, that building's in process of being moved behind, um. Oh. Contractor that purchased it. Yeah, they're gonna fix it up and put it in the back there. It's not gonna stay where it's currently at. They're just having to widen some of their area to keep moving it forward.
So then that wasn't bid out for demolition, though?
Um. I think if there was an option to demo it or do something else with it.
Oh. Uh, my understanding was it's supposed to have been demo- demolition, but I got another question. Uh, Sherman Park. Now, it's been closed for two years. Now, last year I talked to a commissioner. Uh. The contractor wanted to let the core put thirteen sites in for their workers. The rest of the park remained completely empty all summer. It wasn't used for transient worker. It was empty. Now this year we closed it again. And the same thirteen sites are there. And the rest of the park is completely empty. Is, it's like the guy gets a private campground for building thirteen sites for himself. Is that true or are they gonna redo the whole park?
No, they're doing more work there. They're just working on the projects right now. Some that work will start here pretty soon, but they're gonna put in more sites, more sanitary. And more water.
So that is gonna be done this year, then?
Yes, sir.
I guess one final question is, like, the seasonal rates, I used to rent a spot there thirty-five years ago when my kids were little. Were like sixty dollars a season. Now, I can say two or four hundred. How are these summer residents gonna be able to afford them with they got electricity, water, sewer on? Or are they gonna still be able to get them for the same rates? Or are you gonna keep some of the campsites, uh, what we call rustic?
I think there will be a handful that are still rustic, yes, because not all the number of sites that'll be in the area will be. Modern. So there will still be some rustic sites back there.
Okay, that's just my concerns there. All right, thank you.
Yeah, great questions, Mr. Clare. Thank you very much. Uh, anybody else have any, uh, questions or comments, uh?
This is, uh, Abby Bell. I just have one other comment, if that's all right.
Yes, sure, Abby.
Um, all right, so perfect. And just in reference to the community services board. Um, I know that it's been a really hard year with COVID and everything like that, and I completely emphasize. But as a member of the board, I mean, um, these meetings have been canceled month after month with very little notice, sometimes no notice at all. And I do just wonder what is happening with that twenty thousand dollars. That's a. I mean, it either needs to be allocated by end of June, or I believe it goes back to the general fund. Um, so I would just like to hear, you know, I would like to have a meeting of the community services board. Um, so I guess that's just my comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Abby. Appreciate it. Thanks for serving on the, uh, community services board as well.
Oh, thank you. It's been so fun.
Any other, uh, questions or comments? I see, uh, and Amanda has her, uh, hand up. I don't know if you had any comments for the commission.
I did. Um, I'm gonna leave my camera off. Maybe I'll have a better connection this time.
Okay, sure.
Um, I guess. I don't exactly understand every budgeting intricacy. But, um, the twenty thousand that was allotted for the community services board and youth recreation. Um, I think is going away in the next fiscal year. Um, I just think, um. It could be redistributed or maybe the commission could consider redistributing that money for ongoing costs of a splash pad. Um, you know, starting year six and on. And, um. Then the money that was intended for youth recreation continues to fund youth recreation. And, um, I know June thirtieth is quickly approaching, so I just felt like that, um, question needed to be asked, I guess. Um, thanks again for, um. Listening to all of our, uh, stuff tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you for participating. We appreciate that. Anybody else have any, uh, questions or comments for the, uh, commission? We do appreciate all the, uh, input. It, uh, really is good to get, uh, citizens', uh. Perspective because, uh, we are here certainly to serve you. So, um, thank you very much. So seeing, uh, no more. Uh, public input, we will go on to city commission. Any commissioners have any, uh, questions, comments this evening? Commissioner Twardy.
Just a reminder that, uh, Friday is Engineers Day. And it will look a little bit different this year, but, um, I know that the Corps of Engineers and the Coast Guard, they're still planning on have. Having informational booths out on Portage Street. So I'm hoping that community members still come out and, you know, enjoy the festivities and shop local and, um. To see what the Corps of Engineers is up to. It should be a really great day as long as the weather holds up.
Holy cow, I can't believe how fast, uh, the spring is already going, but you're right, it is. Uh. Is it this weekend or next weekend? Following again.
This weekend.
This weekend. Woo! And I think the, uh, US Coast Guard base will be open as well. So look for, uh. Certainly look for flyers and Facebook posts and everything. The Convention and Visitors Bureau does a great job of, uh, pushing out that information. So, uh. Yeah, it's gonna be an excellent weekend. Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Baspus Rath.
I just wanted to add that there will be also trucks out and stuff at the Army National Guard that day. So people can go down and check that out.
That's a great point. I, I think it's going to be, uh, although you can't cross over the locks to the, uh, second, to the middle area, I think it will be. Uh, probably the re-engineered Engineers Day. I think it's gonna be just as fun or more fun, uh, this year, and there'll be a lot of excitement and. A lot of people traveling post-COVID, so excellent. And somebody just posted, uh, Sabrina, that. Historical Society will have a train exhibit from eleven to five, too, free for everyone. So it's gonna be a great weekend. Uh, look on, uh. The Sioux CVB website for, uh, all the events coming up. So. Any other commissioners?
One quick one.
Sure.
Uh, wanted to remind everyone that after a year's hiatus, Music in the Park will be returning Wednesday with, uh, stars.
Excellent.
Seven o'clock, be there.
All right, that's exciting. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Baspus Rath, I just reminded her or something.
Well, I'm just reading from Michelle, I think it was, about the theater will be open as well and they're showing Frozen. So. I wanted to just throw that out to everybody.
Nobody can say we don't have a lot to do. Very exciting. Thank you very much.
In the park, she said. Oops, in the park.
All right. Awesome. Uh, Commissioner Miller.
What time did Commissioner Bauer say the Music in the Park starts? I didn't hear the time. I'm sorry.
Seven o'clock.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Hmm. All right. We have a, uh, motion. To adjourn.